Mayor, thank you so much. As you all know, the GOV Elementary has been a project that's been lingering for many, many years, about five years now. The city's gone out for about six procurements and we have not had a responsive bidder that was fully qualified to any of those procurements. So this procurement that we are here with today has brought two responsive bidders. They are both here today and they'll be giving presentations. So I'll turn that back to you, Mayor.
And Commissioner, as you recall, this is something we voted on maybe two weeks ago, or maybe three, to have an open process for anybody who wants to submit a proposal. And as Council indicated, we received two proposals. And today, we're here to entertain those proposals. And Mayor Clerk, you can read into the record in order they're gonna come.
Yes, sir. Our first presentation is from GOV Estates LLC, James Houston III.
And the second?
Oh, and item number two would be presentation from FHM Ventures LLC, from Miguel A. Montero.
Now, you can ask all the questions you want to my colleagues. There's no limitation of questions to any of the presenters. We want to make sure we have transparency here, so ask all the questions you want. I do think we have a time for the next presentation, so at this point, we might just need to look at that time and not, if it's, what is it, 5:15? What do you have for the next?
It starts at 5 o'clock, the first presenter, and the second presenter will be at 5:45, sir.
5:45, so if we should need more time within that last 10 minutes, we'll stop and then go and ask you guys, get the Commissioner to approve to get additional time with the presenters.
Yes, sir.
We want to make sure we have time.
Absolutely.
Okay, so right now, it's gonna be 5:45 for the next presenter. All right, are there any opening comments or questions for my colleagues? And if not, we'll just go and get the presenters in. And by the way, can we make a disclosure of anybody in order to counsel?
Thank you so much. We would like if everyone who's in this room, if you are with one of the proposers and you are not with GOV State LLC, please leave. If you remain in this room, then that means that you are either member of the public or affiliated with GOV State LLC. We would ask that everyone in the room silence and turn off their cell phones. This is not a time for use of the cellphone. Obviously, this is their opportunity for a presentation and for questions from your elected officials.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Manager, and thank you Clerk, and thank you, Council for the House cleaning. And again, are there any questions for my colleagues before we start? If not?
Sir?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor, you've been recognized.
I have two questions, just for the staff and our attorney, just to make sure, and like you say, transparency. The both presenters, this could go for whoever from the city that could answer it. Both proposal was submitted in time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All the procurement was completed? I mean, they followed all the procurements? Did they meet both presenters' meet all the procurement procedures?
Yeah.
Requirements for, on our, on our city behalf?
Yes, sir. The two presentations that you have before you did meet the procurement requirements.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to put that on record.
No, no problem. Thank you, Vice Mayor, it's an excellent question, comments. Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Reese.
For clarification, I would like to also add, so we did receive three proposals. Unfortunately, one of the proposals was received 47 minutes after the cutoff time, so they were automatically disqualified. But these two did make it in on time, so, just for clarification and transparency.
So let the record reflect, there was three, but two made it, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Mayor Clerk, you can introduce the first presenters.
I have GOV Estates LLC with James Houston III, and Representative to come forward, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. James Houston is my name. I am presenting to, as a GOV Development Project, we are looking to do the redevelopment there. And I would like to introduce, at this time, my staff and my team that will be there with me. I'm sorry, first I need to go over the agenda. We're gonna try to keep it on time, as we said, 30 minutes, I believe is what we're allowed, and try to have some times for questions that we can be able to ask. First, we'll have the introductions, what I'm doing now, and we want him to do the intro, we can go back to the agenda, just want to go through that real quickly. We'll go over our family history and our community roots. Nextly, we'll do the development and legacy. Next, the homebuyer support initiatives. Next, the financials. At number six, we'll do the vision and features of GOV Project. And lastly, we'll close. But that'll be the agenda for us. Hopefully, like I say, we can get it done in 30 minutes and you guys can have time to ask questions and that type of thing. Nextly, I want to introduce my team. My father, James Houston Jr. He is a founder of the company and currently resides in Kansas City, Missouri, but is here probably three, four times a month, actually. So he helps me out quite a bit. Nextly, is my nephew, Ron Houston, Houston. He's been working with us for the last six months. Actually, he's come down, he's graduated from, excuse me, graduated from University of Findlay, located in northwest Ohio, played football there on a scholarship, also graduated with a bachelor's in marketing. He started his career after school with, actually entrepreneurship, had his own cleaning company up there in northwest Ohio, and decided that, got tired of the corporate world and it was time for him to come down and help, help his uncle out. So we're glad to have him here, and he's doing a wonderful job. My daughter, Kalen Houston, she graduated from Florida State University. It's Maya. And majored in family and child sciences with a minor in chemistry and biology. She then later came and worked for a little bit, worked for a couple of years, came and then she went up to Howard University, got her MBA, and now she resides in Dallas, working for the, get the name right, Dale Technologies, I have to get that right, I'm so used to saying Dale Computers. But Dale Technologies, she's been there for the last three years and really enjoying it. So we're glad to have her here with us today to help present and, change the slide there. So currently, what I'd like to do is get my father up and just give us a little background on our roots here in Belgrade.
I guess probably, I could say I'm not really the pioneer. My dad and, and mother was the original founders of Houston and Vilti. They moved here in 1933 and remained here until their death. I was born also here, happily, and, but my parents was the type of people who was totally dedicated to this city. Their efforts, their interest, everything was expended here until death. I knew many of the old timers that was along there with them because it brings forth in my mind, anytime, the history of Belgrade. When there were time, my dad, I can remember, had a tank on his truck. We had to bring water in here for drinking purposes, all the way from Okeechobee, Florida. But they endured it and they remained throughout that time. I, after, well, I, after I finished college, I did two, returned here. And I set up a pharmacy, in fact, I was the first black pharmacy to come to this Belgrade area. And so I served as a pharmacist here. And also, then I worked with my dad, and we acquired quite a bit of land, where we built complexes, apartment complexes on Avenue A. We built them on Avenue E, almost to 16th Street, also 9th Street. Those were areas of development that I participated in, though I was in Kansas City, but like my son said, I was not a stranger to Belgrade. I was in here doing quite a few things. Now, I'll give you a little bit of history of myself as it relates to Kansas City, Missouri, and maybe you might understand why I didn't come right back to Belgrade to reside. And Kansas City, I acquired three shopping centers. I rehabbed over 160 houses in Kansas City, and I managed and owned a multiple amount of apartment buildings. So therefore, it kept me pretty busy there. But I did not forget Belgrade. All the time I was away from here, much of my resources I reinvested in here because I believed in this city. I believe in the growth and the prosperity of this city, and that's what I have done. I certainly want to thank the Commissioner and the Mayor, and possibly also the city manager for this time. And I pray that consideration will be considered for the amount of interest, the amount of sweat and tears and work, that beginning with my parents, and then me, then me, and then my son, and now the fourth generation, is trying to put a hand in the growth and prosperity of Belgrade. I thank you for this, you've been here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm back, and we're gonna talk about the development and legacy. We're talking about things that we've done in this city and pretty much since I've gotten here. We started out, I came here in 1995, and maybe 94, got started. First we got here, we saw a piece of land there on Avenue E that was vacant, also on 10th Street. Went and acquired the land, that's our first project, it was the Avenue E Place, single family development, which is where we had the first infill housing in Belgrade. We financed that with personal and family capital, and of course, I launched our development here in town. Again, like I said, that was on Avenue E Place, and also, you know, on the 10th Street, down the 10th Street, if you notice those homes there, we have some pictures there. Nextly, saw a piece of property there on Main Street, just vacant, nothing, nothing happening. I said, man, we, we need to buy that property. We bought that property and said, now, what can we put here? Well, knew the city didn't have a breakfast store, breakfast to go to, fast food. Said, okay, hey, well, let's, let's consider Dunkin' Donuts. I grabbed my father, grabbed my brother, and we went up to Dunkin' Donut University and acquired the land, built that Dunkin' Donuts freestanding. I think now it's a Chinese restaurant now, but we sold it, we ran it for 13 years and moved on. Nextly, was our first project there on 14th Street, that's Amelia Gardens, back in 2003. We constructed, designed, and constructed 12 duplex multifamily housing unit there. And we had financing there through the SHIP program, through the Palm Beach County, that worked with, real closely with Palm Beach County Sustainability. We worked with all the, all of the, all of the heads there at that department, Ramar Harmon, I believe, was there then. I think after him was Katura Joseph. We also worked with Ed Lowry, and I think now Jonathan Brown, we're doing many things with him as well. So have quite a bit of history in dealing with those affordable housing tools and financing tools to be able to put up affordable housing here in town that we could definitely use. Moving on to Avenue C Place and Southwest Avenue B, with three duplexes, also infill housing, rental housing, also privately financed through the equity, our own equity and operating capital. Nextly, was Southwest 12th Street, there on the corner of 12th Street, two homes on either side of that Avenue D, and then on down the block for another five homes. So those were also infill housing, and also did that through the Palm Beach County Affordable Housing Program. Definitely increased the inventory of all the starter homes for local families here. Nextly, we, being in the Dunkin' Donuts, we had stores in Clueston, Belgrade, Okeechobee, and Dania Beach. So we got a chance to see Clueston, and it was like, man, they need some housing here down in Harlem. Definitely needed some housing. We went down and built those two homes and have plans to do more now, but built those two homes and was able to rent those out and continue to rent them out today. Definitely affordable housing there. Lastly, we, well, part of the last phase is Amelia Estates', full, full-service project here. This one, we started in and, and went in and did all the infrastructure, got it all done, and then, of course, came the down of the economy. We had so much things going on, but came, after we did the infrastructure, came back and did Phase One in 2018, which was 30 apartments and 18 townhomes there in Belgrade, here in Belgrade. Used the SHIP funds, which were, you know, the Strategic Housing Initiative Program. And it's used for affordable housing, and we were able to put and continue to keep residents there that are affordable, low and very low income type housing for them. And we used a regional banking partner there. Came back in a year or two and did the second phase in Amelia Estates', Phase Two, and that which was 35 modern storm resilient townhomes. Also, the financing there was through First Bank of Clueston, so was able to, and actually, all of our local banks were, either First Community Bank that was here for a long time, have a long time, longstanding relationship with them, and of course, First Bank of Clueston. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to my daughter, who's gonna tell you a little bit about the project today.
Thank you so much, Dad, for all that history, which now brings us here today. So I'm going to share some of the vision and features for the GOV redevelopment project. So let's start with some of the site plans. This community will cover 10 acres and include 64, 50 to 60-plus, single-family workforce homes. Each home will be about 1,500 square feet, with the pricing in the low to mid 300,000s, keeping them very accessible while still delivering quality and value. We're also excited about the enhancements for Mace Park. So we can see the pedestrian gate right there, we're gonna develop the Mace Park right there and just enhance it. We're gonna have dedicated pedestrian walkway connected so that the neighborhood directly to the park can make it easy for residents to enjoy. Our goal is to create a vibrant green space where families can gather, kids can play, and neighbors can come together for recreation and community events. And then, I also want to talk about some of the building standards. So because we're committed to quality, every home will be Category 5 hurricane-rated construction standards for maximum safety and durability. There'll be smart homes, so that'll be designed for convenience, comfort, and efficiency. So when you think of smart homes, just think of, imagine adjusting your thermostat from your phone before you even get home. Lights turning on automatically when you enter the home. Video doorbell, so you can see and access visitors that are visiting your home from anywhere, from your phone. Smart locks for keyless entry and secure entry. Also, of course, energy-efficient systems that help save on utilities from month to month. The layouts, as you can see here, are very functional and modern. Two-car garages are available, very open living spaces, and master suites with master closets, walk-in closets, and private baths. Bedrooms 2 and 3, as you can see here, will each have their own closet space and share a bathroom, a drag-and-jill bathroom. The master bedroom will also open directly to the back porch for easy access for relaxing outdoors. At the heart of this project, our vision is simple, to build durable, comfortable, and modern homes that would be, that we would be proud to live in ourselves. Spaces that feel smart, stylish, and welcoming. Thank you, and I'll now pass it on to my cousin Ron to discuss some of the homebuyer support and initiatives.
Appreciate you all taking the time to give us this opportunity. Before I kind of dive into the, the homebuyer support initiatives, I just wanted to touch on my story a little bit, not to make it about myself, but just to continue the theme of our roots and what we plan to do here in Belgrade. So I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. I've never lived in South Florida, I never lived in Belgrade, but recently, I decided to make the move, for one, obviously, to help, help Monk, help the family, as well as just being honestly pulled and gravitating to Belgrade, to the people of Belgrade, to the community, and also the growth that I've seen just from watching him. So with that, we're talking about workforce housing. With workforce, workforce housing, you know, what does that really look like and who's it designed for? So it's designed for essential workers, middle-class, middle-income families, and the reason that's so pertinent and relative to Belgrade is because the median income of Belgrade is around high 40s, 50,000. So definitely be able to benefit those that are in the community. So in order to bring this, this vision, this development to Belgrade, I want to touch on the different initiatives and how we plan to support them. So one, basically being the first-time homebuyer program. So there's a number of different programs that fall into that, but essentially, just being able to make sure that we give you all the, or give the potential residents and tenants the right consultation, education, as well as the resources to make sure that they're prepared for when the development goes up. So we want to make sure that the communities of Belgrade, Pahokee, and South Bay get first dibs, that they, you know, they're able to position themselves for when that time comes. But we also do want to be able to attract others within the Palm Beach County and surrounding counties as well. With that, kind of going back to the initiatives, down payment assistance is also available. So really, just being able to make sure that we do our due diligence to find all the resources that we can, whether it's in the county, state, or federally, but making sure that we access all of those to, again, be able to educate and prepare the tenants, or the residents of Belgrade for the GOV redevelopment project. And then, lastly, is just the community engagement aspect. So with us already having a strong presence, having tenants currently, we want to be able to use that database of tenants and previous tenants to be able to transition them to ownership. So be able to qualify them based off of their experience with us, and again, be able to give them the right education and consultation to prepare them for home ownership. Additionally, we've always used local laborers, we've always used local contractors, local suppliers, and local vendors. That's the same thing that we'll, we'll keep on theme and make sure that we do, if we get the opportunity to do this GOV redevelopment. And then, lastly, going back to that consultation and just the education aspect, being able to offer virtually and in-person classes, again, just preparation for making sure that Belgrade residents, Pahokee residents, South Bay residents are able to truly benefit from what they've built, what they've been able to essentially bring to the community and that they can enjoy for themselves. I'll let my unk finish up, and thank you.
All right. So we want to go over the financials here of the, of the project. Basically, I want to start first talking about the demolition costs. As you know, obviously, the old GOV is, some of it's still there. We've been cranking away at it, piece by piece, but it's still got a good little pieces out there. We look at the demolition cost to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000 there. We move forward to prepping each one of the pads. That cost is about $25,000 per pad. And what I've done here, see if we have the other slide there with the financials lineup? That's it, okay. So let me describe it then. Basically, the pad prep is about $25,000 per pad. And what we did here is we said that, you know, we'd love to put 60 homes out there. Not sure if that's gonna happen. We want it to be lots of green space. We want to make sure that we have enough room for kids to play, kids not to be in the street all the time. So we may have to cut it back to 50, you know, but that, but that's what will happen. And so our scenario is, we have this scenario here, but it's with 50 and 60 homes out there. So 50, I'm gonna go through with the 50 homes, because I like to be, you know, a little more conservative. So the demolition cost, again, 800,000, pad prep, 25 grand per pad, takes us up to 1.25 million. Muck remediation, we know that's, that's what we have to deal with here in Belgrade. We've done it in all our projects. We've had, I mean, when I first came, we started doing pilings, you know, but that just doesn't work as well. So we have to demuck, and when you demuck, it's expensive, but it's gonna be there. That building's going nowhere, you don't have to replace pilings that have rotted or whatnot. So when you demuck, you go all the way to the, to the base rock, and now it's dirty, it ain't going nowhere, nowhere while we're here, that's for sure. So that's what has to happen, that, that muck remediation will be about $3 million. So quite expensive to do that. Nextly, we would, we estimate to improve the park at $500,000. That total horizontal, that's before we even start going vertical, we're at about 5.5 million in order to get the horizontal construction completed. Then we'll go vertical, and we hope to be able to catch some savings wherever we can, and we're looking at about $175,000 per unit to build. That's for 50 homes, that's 8.7 million, and then for 60 homes, that's gonna be 10.5 million. Total construction cost for 50 homes, 14.3 million. Total construction cost for 60 homes will be 16.3 million. So that's where we are, we're prepared to do it. We already have commitments from our bank for the horizontal. So we're ready to go. Matter of fact, time is of the essence because we are looking at trying to get additional funding from the county. County has monies out there that's been set aside for the Glades for the last, maybe three years, and they've held on to it, and now they're ready to, to separate with that money. So we would love to be able to have our project shovel-ready, and that's what the criteria is for us to be able to apply for that money. So we are anxious, and if we're chosen, we'll be ready to move. So in closing, I just would, you know, I just would say, as a family, you know, we just urge the Commissioner to move forward swiftly, if you can, and make the decision. We'd love to get moving on this as soon as possible. I would also say that, you know, our family has a long-term commitment, I think we've proven that this evening, of our commitment to the Glades. I, I was born here, but wasn't raised, but was here every, every summer, and winter when Christmas time. So that was, definitely have that commitment here. We love the Glades and we support all the local developers, and we hope that the City Commission would also support the local developers here. I just end with saying, we've been here, we are here, and we'll continue to build here for generations to come. And I tell you, if you, you give us the opportunity, and when we do get the opportunity, we rise. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mr., I don't know, is it, tell me, is it Houston on this side and Houston on the other side? Which one is it?
However you feel that day, however you feel that day, really, it is. Let me tell you a story, because Houston, my grandparents went by Houston, so that's why I try to always say Houston. That's, that's what they, that's what they believed in, that's what we always go, go with. However, when we moved, I lived here till I was five years old. So when I got to Kansas City, they could not say Houston. It was Houston, Houston, Houston. I said, my name's Houston. No, your name's Houston. So I said, okay, we gotta go with it. So that's, that's why I accept whatever you call me, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a couple of questions coming, but I'm gonna yield to my colleagues first. You guys do have a rich history for the Glades. We want to thank you for that, really want to thank you for that. So I'm opening up for my colleagues, and pretty much the same question we asked you, we asked the other presenter too. So to keep it fair. All right, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Reese.
Okay, well, again, you know, I'm familiar with your family, so the family history is, we want to thank you for what you do. There were two things, I, I saw it on the screen, but the floor plans for the housing, I couldn't really distinguish what those floor plans looks like. And I think it's important to be able to see what you're planning on building on those properties. And the layout of the development too was kind of confusing to me. So can you give me a little bit more clarity as to... So can you give me a little bit more clarity as to the layout of the development as well as what type of floor plans you're looking at, the size of the homes and things of that nature?
Yes, definitely. My daughter kind of went over it a little bit. But we're looking at, none of the homes will be under 1,500 square foot, and that's livable square foot. So that means the garage doesn't count, the porch doesn't count, and the front porch entranceway doesn't count. That particular spreadsheet or that particular floor plan?
Yeah, I can barely.
It's tough to see it, I know.
I can barely see it.
But if you looked at it, basically that is about an 1,800 square foot total house. That includes the porches and the patios as well as the garage. So livable, they will be 1,500, they will all be three and possibly four-bedroom as well. So you, and that's the same way we build our townhomes. I mean, if you've ever been in any of them, we get a lot of bang for the buck. All of our residents have always said that. Typically, you go to the coast, the rooms are matchbox. But we are able to try to pinch and save money here, there as best we can to give our residents some space, some space in there. It's an open floor plan, so when you come in, it will feel large. But at 1,500 square feet, workforce housing, I think that is very good substantial, good number for them.
Okay, again, I still like to, still copy of not only just the floor plan, floor plan, but also exterior, so I get an idea of what you're planning on building there. The homes that you showed, again, I, I can barely see it, but again, I just want to get an idea of what it's going along with.
And we do have some renderings as well, yes.
Okay, the marketing strategy too, I, your nephew indicated that he's looking at what we have here in the Glades, so people are living here. One of the things that I like to see is that a number of the individuals are actually working here but living over there, being attracted to live and stay here. Not necessarily people in our community just moving around to different homes. Again, we definitely want our citizens to give their own homes, but we also want to make sure that whatever we build is attractive enough that those who travel 40 miles to the east will want to stay in the west and sleep in the west and do like we do. If you want to travel to the east of Chalk or something like that, that's fine. But we, you know, we got, I think from the last time that I checked, and I'm not sure what the numbers look like right now, of all the schools that we have here in this community, there were only one or two principals that lived in the community. Everybody else was going to the east. And what we like to see is something that would attract those principals, those administrators, our police officers, our firefighters. I would say very few of the firefighters live in our community. They leave and they go east. And so whatever you build, I would like to be attractive enough to attract them to stay. And I hope that your marketing strategy that you will put forth will be one that will reach out to draw them into our community that they may stay. I think you're pretty much aware of the median income for our community. It's my desire that whatever developments that's gonna come is gonna help us to raise that minimum income. And the only way we can do that is to build the type of homes that'll be attracted to those who work here but sleep over there. So I would love to see that type of marketing strategy as well as the floor plans for the housing.
And that's important, Commissioner Reese, and I do hear what you're saying. The only thing that I would say, because I'm all-in with that, don't know particularly if this particular project is for that. Based on the way we received this property, it was for workforce housing. I think the school board had in mind that it was for Belgrade residents. But be it as it may, like you said, there are a lot of people on the coast that would love to, I already see them, I mean, they're living in my apartment rentals now because they don't mind making that commute based on, and especially to pay what they're paying, which is so much less than what they would pay on the coast. I have a ton, I have a number of residents or tenants from Miami, Fort Lauderdale, as well as West Palm Beach. So someone told me in my ear, very loud, "You build it, they'll come." And I'm starting to believe them. I think that if we build a nice quality product, you know, that is very livable, 1,500 square foot is very doable. And as far as the quality and the style of the exterior of the home, we'll let you see it, it's very sellable, very much. So I think it will be a very good project and something that will be attractable for, attracted for many people to come see outside of the Belgrade area.
Okay, I'll come back in case you got some more. Whenever you put your hand in the chair, we'll take it. So I'm gonna come back to you. All right, Commissioner Collins, you've been recognized for comments, or any question you may have.
Okay, first I want to say thank you for continuing to build and build our community here in Belgrade. I do agree with Pastor Reese with seeing an actual picture of what these models would technically look like or perhaps, you know, an idea of a picture of what it should look like. Also, I love the idea, the plan for the enhancement of the Maze Park and possibly seeing some form of a picture of what that enhancement may look like. I am a big guru of therapeutic themes and mental health, and I like the idea that you said that you are big on green space. Having that green space, it will be very therapeutic to the residents as well as community members that will visit that park. But just having more of a visual of what that would look like would be ideal. And I also like the smart technology that you guys are using and will be enhanced inside of the units. But again, if there is a way that you could provide a picture of some sort of what these things would look like, it would be beneficial to us.
We can do that, yes, okay. Yes, yes. This is just a one-page or we can pass out?
Sure, you get it, you're passing. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Vice Mayor, you've been recognized.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Houston Senior Houston, excuse me, let me get it right. I've been through that with the Amazon and Alphazan. I get the feeling, but I appreciate your commitment to come all the way down here and to present yourself and your business here to the city of Belgrade, because that speaks a lot. I have a couple of questions, just for me, because, and I know when they said category five, just to make clear, would those windows be and the doors be category five? Or they'll put shutters, one of the two?
No, they will actually be the hurricane windows and the hurricane-resistant doors with no shutters.
Okay, that's, another question, because I couldn't see it. How would, how big would the driveway be wide, the driveway entry to the garage?
If I'm thinking correctly, it's 20-foot, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's some of my questions. Oh, another one, I know there are gonna be some common areas out there. Would that have an HOA or not?
That will be part of the HOA, yes, definitely.
I'm a strong believer, I believe in HOAs for this reason, because it keeps everybody accountable and your whole, everybody in the neighborhood to a certain, in the community, living in a certain standard. Gives the residents a legal way to tell you, pick up your trash, paint your house. And that's something that is very hard out here to do. But if you do it, people love it because maintains your value or increases your value. So that was my question with the HOA, so I'm good with that.
We'll definitely have the HOA.
One thing I would like to see is maybe, if possible, maybe two sizes of house, maybe a 15, a little bit bigger, you know, living space or 17. But believe me, I can live with anything. This project for me has been setting too long here. And we hopefully, we get somebody today to move this project forward. And man, I want to see some construction out there by the end of the year, to be honest, or sooner if possible. You know, you can go start knocking it down tomorrow, somebody, you know, it's a suicide for the residents that live in that area. And I know the park is just gonna be, you know, an enhancement. So I appreciate all of your family coming out here, but especially Mr. Senior, thank you for coming out here, sir.
Yes, sir, we do have plans to move as quick and soon as possible, so thank you.
Oh, and one more question. On the financing, would you have like a bank for the residents or potential?
Yes, we will have, actually, we'll probably have three lenders out there that everyone kind of fits a different banker. So we'll make sure that we have enough, and we're planning on three, that the resident applicants will be able to go to.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, before we recognize, Commissioner Reese, in case he has another question, we'll actually cover these. I'm strong on landscaping.
Yes, sir.
Give me an idea of what the family is talking about in terms of landscaping. It makes a big difference in small rural communities.
Sure, one of the biggest things we like to do is buffer it. So we will make sure that it's enclosed, buffered in, where, you know, you don't just look and see houses all the time you're riding down Avenue G, I believe it is. But, you know, you just want to have it buffered in very nicely. And then inside there, you'd have plenty of hot, some high, some low vegetation, colorful vegetation, and then enough green space for children to have a play area. Although we do have the park next door, that we will have that access for residents there to enjoy the park as well. But plenty of landscaping, I should have showed more landscaping on our Amelia Seis project, but it would be very similar to that, but, and even more so.
What about the lighting? I know you have in your presentation, give me an idea when you're talking about the street lights. What are we talking about, is that, oh, give me an idea or picture of that.
Well, typically, we are, we would be in congruence or alignment with FPNL, what they would supply. We have to go at least that much. And then we would obviously have enough lighting on all the different homes that they would be able to light their homes up from a floodlight standpoint or from a driveway standpoint, whatever it is. But we would be relegated to what FPNL would give us on the street lighting, that is, yeah.
And the last thing, you heard from my colleagues, I think most of them like visuals. Pictures worth a thousand words, we always say. Is there any room to, not on your floor plans, I understand, that's in concrete, 1,500 square feet per unit. Is there any room to talk about down the road? If you were given this project to look at the exterior in a different way? Are you guys locked in on the exterior as it is now?
When you say the exterior?
Yeah, of the building, the homes, yeah. Because I'm looking at your picture here.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, is that, it don't, is that panel or what is it? I can't.
No, that's cement block, but we are not locked into anything, really. We can upgrade, you know.
You can see, that's what my colleagues, they want to be able to see something that's gonna gravitate to their desire.
Yes, yes.
And what I'm seeing here about me is, it look like panel, but you said concrete.
Cement block, yeah.
If you guys could get that for us, because it does make a difference.
Cement block, stucco.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, any additional questions?
Again, if you can go back to the slide where you had the development layout, and I'm trying to understand what it was that you, there, go back.
So quite frankly, that is our, that is a, like I said, we're not sure if we want to do 50 or 60. I believe 60 may be too much, so it may need some reconfiguring. So if that's the case, we will have to reconfigure that, so that it would be different.
Again, I'm just trying to picture this and where are the front yards for, where's the front yards, where are the backyards? Am I looking at it the wrong way?
Like I say, this is more of a concept than a true site plan. But it's a, it's a concept to get 60 homes in on a 10.2-acre lot, which is, like I said, is probably not gonna happen. We're probably needing to cut it down to a 50, yes.
You know, I guess I'm just saying that looking at that particular layout, I'm not sure I want to move it to that community. And that's what's.
Too congested.
You're right.
Yes, sir. I agree, I agree. The, you know, we were a little subject to the 60 number. We were, you know, we planned on having, you know, a different partner to come here, you know. But this is, this is what we started with, and this is what we moved for with. But like I say, this is something that we believe will change for sure.
Because that, you know, I'm not trying to degrade, but it looks like the old projects.
Yes, sir. And like I said, we, it would not be 60, more like, we're looking at definitely 50 homes. Your site doesn't fail you. It is a little much for the 10.2-acre, when we have to have, we want to have green space. We want to have stormwater retention. We want to have access to the park. Some things you just can't, you can't do it. And that's why I wanted to make sure that you kind of understand that, you know, that's still in the making as far as that number is concerned. And quite frankly, you know, we're really looking at doing different things even with some of the, that was just one floor plan that we had. We plan on having at least three, so there'll be some different ones. Although the living space will remain pretty consistent at the 1,500 square foot, but some different models, floor plans.
And that's a question, you guys would be willing, if all approved by this commission or if we have to look at a different presentation and look at it in a different perspective? But are you guys willing to change your schematics on the outside?
Yes, sir.
That's important for me, because like I say, you want to have the density. So you want to make sure that people, when they buying single-family home, they want it to be single-family.
Single-family, yes, sir.
Not crushed into.
Yes, sir, and that's, and that goes even more so for the Glades.
It's similar to like the Little Line Lot there, you know. My colleague's got a question here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a little bridge that sits there that it aligns with the school that crosses from the school to the park.
The old school?
Yes.
Oh, really, okay.
Do you have an idea of what that would be used for or would it be still there?
I don't know if I've seen that bridge. It's toward the back?
Yes, it, if you leave out of the school and cross the little bridge, it goes over into Maze Park.
Okay, okay, no, I didn't. You know, either we would, you know, upgrade that bridge or we'd be able to use it, one of the two. But it's gonna be probably one, two, or three walkways to the park.
My PR person, what was that?
That particular bridge is the bridge what the kids used to use to go to school, to go, you know, when the old school was there. But recently Keith and some more, they were upgrading that bridge, if I'm not mistaken. We talked about it at staff meeting.
Yeah, that's not the same bridge.
The one you're talking about, Ms. Evans, is across the street on the home side. The one I'm talking about is the little bridge that is adjacent to the school and the park. Like, if you're passing and you're coming up to the school, Maze Park sit on your right-hand side. If you go into Maze Park, you can cross the bridge from Maze Park into the school, the old Gove.
Oh, that's a different one then.
Yeah.
Because the one I'm talking about is the one where you would cross to go to the school.
Yeah, on the left.
It's further down the road.
Okay, so the last thing is. Okay, uh, so, uh, the last thing is, uh, again, starting time would be when, if approved, that you guys get started, uh, with all the, the changes if we got to that point? What would be your best guess of starting, um, and then your worst case of completing the project? Same question I'm asking you, I'm asking other-
Sure, sure. Mr. Mayor, as far as the start, we would be right away. Immediately, like I said, we actually have financing already.
You say right away, what are we talking about?
Once you can sign the contract, we would, uh, be starting before that, actually.
And how long would that project take?
That project, you're probably looking in all in two years.
Two years.
Yeah, yeah. Love to do less of that, but realistically, two years.
All right, all right. Anybody from the audience that's not a part of this team, wish to make a comment statement? We open the floor, anybody? If not, colleagues, any additional counsel? We covered everything, we good?
Uh, Devin, you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, Devin, you have a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Seth Perron, Lieutenant with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, currently serving as the executive officer in this area. I've had a few questions regarding safety and security of your site proposal. Um, are you planning on installing any kind of closed circuit, uh, camera system to monitor the, uh, the neighborhood?
We have not considered this closed circuit for the entire neighborhood, but definitely at the entrance, uh, we looked at having a gated and having security and, and monitoring systems from there.
That was my next question, actually. Um, so this would be considered a gated neighborhood?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Now, the only thing that we, we, and I'd be all ears for my, uh, video monitoring inside as well, I'm just not familiar with that and, and how we could do it.
Okay. Would that gate be manned, or would it be a remote access gate?
Remote access.
Okay. Um, and then the lighting note was already discussed, would be put in by FPL, and then any kind of supplemental lighting would be installed by the homeowner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And this is the purpose of having these open meetings, so if I can have some input. You heard my colleagues, they're concerned about how congested the units are, and they want to see visuals, so, okay? Thank you, Mr. House, uh, sir, yes, sir.
I think one of the major things that we're-
Take the mic to you there. Hold on, sir, we have to record this. Yeah. We have to record everything, so. We have to record everything, you guys, so please understand. Hit that, yeah. Hit the button, yeah. Hit the button, James.
And if we are going to, uh, develop housing here, uh, see, we have not even, uh, employed a, the, uh, a good land architectural designer. I want it to be first class.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to determine the amount of housing, because we only know the land exists, but we didn't investigate to see what, how many homes truly you can put. This was something that was sketch for us, to tell us about the land. But when I get an architect, an architect, to really lay out, because in, in development, one of the most important things is land layout properly with beautiful landscaping, designed, and all of that, before you even think of going vertical with construction. So to give a lot of information on that before we really have that laid out is, is premature, and I wouldn't want to venture too deeply into that. But one of the things for sure is that we want to make quality homes. This is my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may just make a, a, a statement, uh, we did meet with the residents in, in the community, and they were very concerned about whatever goes there adding to the value of their homes and not taking from the value of the homes. That's why, again, uh, the, the other developers were rejected because, uh, we're looking for, as I said before, we, we, we want these houses to be ones that not only the homeowner can be proud of, but their neighbors can also, because it's, it's really adding value to, to their property, because what you, you build there. And if, if what you build there bring down the value of the homes around it, uh, no, it is, it's not beneficial for the community. So, uh, that's one of the commitments that we made to the community itself, that whatever goes there will add value to their property as well because of what's being built. And as, as you can see, the standards have already been established by what went behind Winn-Dixie. And the homes that went behind Winn-Dixie, the developer that we dealt with before, didn't feel like those homes would sell in this community, because they was not looking at the medium income. But what they found is that not only did those homes sell, but there was some competition in buying them. And, and, and so they, they were attractive to people, and as I said before, uh, we have firefighters that do not live in this community. We have police officers that do not live in this community. We have principals and administrators that do not live in this community. We have corporate executives in this, that do not live in this community, but they work here. And we need to be able to attract them. And so that's why what you build is so important for this community.
I would just add one thing here. Uh, when we got first involved, there were the problem, the school board stating that they had to be home-built within a limited kind of income. And that was one of the major things, our, our, I'm very much aware of the exclusiveness in the fine homes over in that area. And one of the things I think I, I mentioned was that I really don't want to be tied down to a limited cost factor on a home. Some people probably might want to go with a five hundred thousand dollar home in there. I would love to be able to build what people want.
And, and we understand that, and, but again, there are some teachers that are living on the coast that would like to live here. And I, and I think that was the target that the school board was looking at, attracting teachers to be in the community. And, and so there are some teachers that are traveling forty miles to the east, because that's where they're living, in Royal Palms and, and it's, it's other communities. And we want those teachers and those administrators to, to stay here.
But that's the reason we really want to build and construct homes that is very desirable to what people want.
Right.
You know, I don't want to go in there just simply building some house, some tract homes, uh, because, uh, Belgrade is needing now for quality, highly quality homes, because you do want to pull people from Palm Beaches and, and, and Lottie Dells and wherever else in the county, to come into this area and be willing to stay and live. But you got, they've got to have the same quality of homes that is comparable to what they can get over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the house and the Houston family. Uh, we're going to go ahead and entertain our next presenter. Thank you guys so much.
Meeting adjourned at five fifty-eight.
What happened?
Meeting adjourned at five fifty-eight.
Yes, thank you. Turn it up. Real time?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. All right. All right, my clerk, uh, introduce our next group.
The next presentation is from HFHM Ventures LLC with Miguel A. Montero.
Okay. Yes, welcome, guys.
How are you? Can we, uh, check something here?
I can try.
Yeah, very simple.
Is Jim here or not? I hope so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I just want to reiterate that, um, we would ask that everyone put their phones on silent, and please put their phones away for this presentation. Also, if you are affiliated with Gov Estate LLC, we would ask that you leave at this time. If you are here for FMH Ventures LLC, you are permitted to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give us one second, guys.
Sure, 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 no, no, take your time. So there's one, probably the simplest one, if you have PowerPoint on your machine, there's the PPT format, forget, if you can just open up a little bit what the names are, I forget, never. Should do it. So we're going to do the click, and I tell you, oh, excellent, thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
All right.
It's all yours. All right.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. Yes, yes, thank you.
If you don't mind, I want to put my own timer here, I'd like to know what's going on with my time, so, uh... So, good evening, my name is Miguel Montero, with me is Juan Carlos Feltes, we're here today, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Take that mic.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you this afternoon. Uh, as you know, uh, there was a, a change in our proposal, right? On the fourth of August, we deliver our proposal, and, uh, two days later, uh, we found out from the part of the team that they're no longer were part of the team. We also find out, found out that day that there was another proposal from them who were in the team before. So we quickly re-engineer our team, and we're proud what we're going to show to you here today. We did make new copies, new documents, which reflect that change, right? They're no longer part of this. So if I may distribute those, please?
To the clerk.
To the clerk, we're here.
Answer. Eight copies, eight copies, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I may, what, what I will do is, of course, share our proposal in a, in a PowerPoint format, uh, with you here today. And, uh, I have to say that we're excited, obviously, okay, let me see, here we go. Uh, and I think if I hit this button, it probably does its thing. We're excited, forty miles west, right, from the east coast of the United States, lies the land that we're talking about today, the, the former Gov Elementary Site, in which we have put together a plan that shows you what we would like to do with a, with a plan, and what we will do with our plan, okay? The objective today is to speak about the project that we call Gov Estates, and also address the land that you see to the right of that image, which is Maze Park, for which we also have a plan. So that is why we intend to share with you in the afternoon today, and that's what we'll be, uh, sharing. So, the agenda is very simple, I'm going to give you a quick overview for the proposal list, then I'll talk a little bit about the team, then I'll talk about the project itself, and then, of course, next steps, open to questions, you might question us as well, uh, as we progress, okay? So, the proposal overview, right? It's, uh, it's a plan for a project that is not simple. And the reason we say it's not simple is because it involves all pieces of the project, meaning from that planning stage all the way through demolition, then you have the development of the land, then you have the building, and you have a very, very important piece, which is a homebuyer engagement, something that is not only sales, but also engaging with the community, making sure that they understand what is happening at all stages. And I'll get into the details of all of these, obviously, uh, coming up. But beneath them, there are the different types of elements that will be involved in each of those steps. So I will cover those with more, uh, more detail coming forward. Now, let me talk about the team. The team that we quickly reassemble is, uh, of course, meant to handle what we call suktunut. This is not one of those where somebody develops a land and then someone comes in and, and builds, and then someone sells. This is one where the team puts together everything they needed to make it happen. So it's integration, it is planning, development, building, then sales and home organ engagement. There is multi-joys dictions involved here, obviously, we know the city is involved, we also know Palm Beach County is involved, we also know the South Florida Water, Water Management District is going to be involved, everyone's going to have to say, essay on what's happening. For instance, do we need to update the lift station to the new standards that Palm Beach County has? All, all those considerations have been taken into account. And then, of course, the covenants with the land has to be for workforce, housing, and there may be, uh, an acceptance of the NSP funding, which is obviously, you explained, it's optional, but we know it's there with its own covenant. So all that has been considered. Now, there is experience, there is capacity, and there are resources, all of which are paramount to make this project happen. And it couldn't be better if we bring together the very same team that successfully put together Hillsboro Estates, okay? So what that means is that part of the team of HFHM, is Juan Carlos Feltes here to my left, who built every single house in Hillsboro Estate from the ground up as part of the project that was then part of Ryan Homes. Then, joining us in our team is Mr. John Long, who was the president of Ryan Homes when he believed that Belglades was the place to build. So he has come on board, and he's now part of the FHMT team to work along Juan Carlos to bring all these new units that we'll show you about to fruition and to reality. But that's not all. We're also going to be joined by Belglades' own Bill Poole, who has, is part of our team now, and fully understands what it takes to build this, having been an absolute essential part of the success of Hillsboro Estates. So right there, you have, of course, yours truly, who will put all the administrative efforts behind the scenes, that is what brings what I brought down there, planning, development, building, and sales. It's imperative, all these work together. And what, what we have put together is the team that already did it. So we're not making something new here, we already know what it takes to make that happen, okay? So that is the team that makes up FHMT, and it is reflected on the documents that we shared with you a few minutes ago, right? So, let's get into the project. What is the project? The project, of course, as I mentioned, has these five very intricate steps. But as I get into each one of them, I want to make sure that two things are foremost in here. First of all, community engagement. And what do we mean by that? By nature, right, we know people are waiting for more development in Belglade, okay? The questions are, where are new homes coming in? When will we be able to, um, you know, see them, opportunities, right? So that curiosity will be, of course, higher when they see demolition started, when they see things happening. So, very simple things like what we call project description signage. So what is happening today? We're going to be demolishing, we are going to be reaching out to the community, let them know what all the activities are, very important to us. And not only that, I also want to point out, if we look at the last piece of the milestones, this homebuyer engagement and vertical constructions, right? We're, we're going to build the project in five phases. First phase is the horizontal, what we call the horizontal, development, land, make sure all the infrastructure is there. And then we will have four phases of homes being built. But that is continuous. And all throughout that, we're going to be engaging potential homebuyers, uh, people that do not own a home yet, people that maybe want to buy a new home they already own, and we'll show, show you a little bit more, what are we going to do in our sales center to make sure we educate and we share information and knowledge, which is absolutely essential for anywhere, whether it's a first-time homebuyer, or someone that has already purchased two, one, and pre-three, and they qualify, qualify for workforce housing, that they also know what to expect. And we'll get into a little bit more details on, on what that all entails. So, with that said, let's go into the first phase, which is planning. And planning, to us, is a phase because, first of all, we have to come to agreements, of course, there are covenants involved in, uh, in the use of the land and the, the quee, the claim that has been mentioned- in the use of the land, and the claim that has been mentioned will be the process. We will, of course, respect those, and there will be some agreements, I'm sure, as a process, we will get into those. Those, we understand are there. Then, planning, workforce housing, what are the requirements of workforce housing? What is it that is necessary for the financing of the project? That will be part of this phase. Then, planning, what's going to be what, et cetera, I'll show you some preliminaries already of what the site will look like. But, of course, there are conversations that will have to be had with the city, with the county, like we mentioned, with the South Florida Management District, which may, in certain ways, alter that already potential site plan that we're going to show you. And then, of course, we need to talk to stakeholders. You are stakeholders, citizens of the city are stakeholders, and frankly, citizens of surrounding areas are stakeholders, because we plan to market the GOV Estates project, not only here in Palm Beach County, but also Miami-Dade, Broward, and Martin County, because the fact is, there are people in all those counties looking for new homes in affordable places, this is going to be an excellent project for that. So, finally, on the planning side, of course, permitting. And this is a very key piece of the puzzle, why? Because we understand that the city will be quite receptive, and they'll work with it, but we know the county's going to be involved, we know other districts are going to be involved. So, our team already has the experience, they have gone through that process, understanding the complexities of all those different items, and that is certainly part of the planning session that is the first stage in the project today, okay? So, second step, demolition. Demolition of what is remaining, which are the buildings under the city, removes some buildings already, so the ones that are left standing. Now, demolition, it could be as easy as getting bulldozers and start breaking things down, but it really isn't. There is a lot of preparation that has to go through, and this is where our team brings in their experience into play, because they know there has to be site assessments and documentation. We understand from the information that we have received, there is no asbestos in the facility, but we have to do some testing. We have to be very, have to make sure that there isn't any, so that when we continue with demolition, that is properly taken care of. And those types of comments that I'm now making is why we believe the team is as strong as it is, because we know all those different issues that need to be considered. Permitting, of course, is going to be necessary, environmental hazardous material abatement, site safety. Every builder knows that is absolutely cynical, non, as I would say in Latin, not negotiable, right, at all times. Site safety, site safety from the point of someone maybe walking to the site, and everybody that works there, and of course, utility termination, site setup. So, that's phase one of demolition, second phase, the execution, this is where we start. Self-demolition first, the structural demolition then after that, and of course, managing all the waste, removing everything that needs to be moved. So, this phase requires a careful planning, but also analysis post-demolition. Somebody's going to come up, what are the remnants of the facility, is it clear, is it ready, and is it prepared to be handed over to that second phase, which now we're going into the horizontal phase? So, this is all the demolition piece of the activity. So, now, we go into GOV Estates, and the horizontal infrastructure is where one of our partners, Bill Poole, of course, has already worked on that, understands very well the intricacies of the steps, and these are but a selection of the most clear and pressing items that have to do with the horizontal and development phase. There are, of course, many other moving pieces, all of which we already covered, but surveys, and staking permits again, site clearing, erosion control, all the things that are absolutely necessary when we are doing the horizontal infrastructure. Then, we get into the actual installation of everything that goes in there, and of course, it goes from the mucking that we all know we have to do here, it goes with irrigation, because irrigation is essential for the plan that we'll show you here shortly, from the get-go. Those are, those are all part of our already vision for the project. And then, we get into the third and final stage, which is, all right, are we ready to pass this? Now, we gave from demolition, we're ready to do the development, now we're ready to pass it to the home building itself, okay? Open to hear any questions? Very, okay, great, thank you. So, here's a preliminary look at the site. Now, Avenue G would be on the top of the image, so if I head down from here and I make a left on Avenue G, I'm going to have on my right on the top. So, you see there, does this have a little, I think it does, huh? Maybe laser point? Uh-oh, now I really screwed up. Okay, here we go, so it's back, let's not do that. You see on the top, right, you see what looks like trees, that entire area will be lined with trees, okay? And there will be a boulevard entrance, making sure that they see the entry, there will be a monument in there, and we make it a point to emphasize that our planning, which is, obviously, has to be presented, but is already preliminary, includes 30 feet wide streets. And that's important, because if you have less than that, if you have one car parked on one side, you only have space for another car. So, we're already planning that you could have cars parked on both sides of the road, and you may still drive through, okay? And that is essential, and that's why we emphasize our plan already includes the 30-foot wide streets, 30 feet wide street. Circular traffic flow, essential, and again, we will review this further upon award, but this is a preliminary that we have been working on along with architects, and Juan Carlos has been instrumental in making this, and all the designs you're going to see here today are his creation along with our architects, okay? So, we've gone through the planning, we've gone through the demolition, we did the horizontal, and now, let's jump into the actual building of the homes, okay? This is a render of what that beautiful unit is going to look like, this is workforce housing at its best, and what we are doing here is making sure that we not only craft them meticulously, right, but they're also open, they're comfortable, they are inviting to those homeowners. So, this design that you see here, which is, was built by Juan Carlos along with our architects, he owns that, okay? It's a, it's an open concept, has a garage, nice entrance, you open and you see, you see the entire space, and then you have your bedrooms. Three bedrooms, two bath, very good combination, and that is what we will build for every single homeowner, with few options to give him some variety, but this is where we will, this is what we will build for the site, okay? I do have, of course, more details, you go now into, this is what the front elevation looks like and the rear elevation, and then, you will see the side elevations, so you see lots of windows, it's quite a, quite a, quite a lot of light coming into the design. So, what are we building? These are 60-plus, we say 60-plus, remember, that's a preliminary, we have to figure out the final number, 60-plus, single-family, finely-created homes. 1,501 square feet space, nine-foot ceilings, cat five hurricane-ready, and that's why winds up to 160 miles. That's the windows, the way it is built, those will be part of the, of the building specifications. It's going to be solar panel accessible, so it will have the necessary connections, stainless steel appliances, three bedrooms, two baths, two-car garage, and of course, the open concept, so modern today, and that's what we know that homeowners want. And I emphasize that we know what homeowners want, because if you go back to our team, part of our team, not only Juan Carlos and Bill, but then you have John Long, formerly with Ryan Homes, he understands the homeowner, and he's very, very in tune about how do we make sure that the owner has the best value? And that is why his participation in our team is so critical, just like the other two members as well. So, I am quickly going through the project, and I told you to do the overview, right? And now, we're in the fifth phase, but it's really a continuous phase, right? Because we said customer engagement, or we'll start way at the beginning, because you can't wait for the first house to be set up. We have to then create the buzz, we have to go out there and start telling people that GOV Estates is real, GOV Estates will be made, and we're going to market, market the city of Belglades, because we believe in the city. We have been here before, the team has done it, they believe it'll be an absolutely great project, and there will be interest in the surrounding area. So, branding and awareness is part of our marketing, okay? You're going to see a website, you're going to see social media teasers, you're going to see press releases, which will work alongside as the CDC fits. Then, we're also going to do early engagement. And we know there are lists already, and people that have been calling and saying, is there going to be new construction? Juan Carlos and I ran into someone here not too long ago, we were having lunch, and someone said, you know, you know, people are looking for new homes in here in the area, but there aren't really any. Why? Because the project that they successfully built, Hillsboro Estates, sold out, right? Sold out very quickly, completely, completely. So, we know that, the team understands what it takes to get those units sold, and they understand what the local homeowners are looking for. So, early engagement, along with previous event, and then, of course, tours of the model homes are going to be essential. But, we don't stop there, then we go into the community reveal events, and we'll work along with the city, we'll work with our social marketing team to make that happen, there'll be outreach programs, and like I said, we will market the city, Miami-Dade, and Broward, Palm Beach, and Martin County, okay? Ground openings, events, it's just not just about the bill, the bill is important, we have to make sure people understand this is a brand-new community, it's a brand-new concept coming into Belglade. So, as part of this engagement, in our sales office and a sales center, we are going to engage the prospective homeowners with education, with information. Sometimes, do they need to know what type of documents should they be expecting to be asked in an underwriting scenario, right? Some people know, some people do not know, but we know that's important. So, our plan here, which is already set up, is to do workshops and seminars, at the very least, once a month, right? While the process starts. And what are those workshops and seminars? Hey, it's credit readiness, are you ready, are you not? We have to make sure that they fall within the covenants of workforce housing, right? They can only have so much earnings based on the county medium, those are all requirements, right? So, people, there will be people who will fall from the process, because maybe they make too much money, maybe they're having enough, but that's part of the sales outreach we're going to do. Budget and affordability, of course, are part of the workshops, the loan program overview, what's out there. There are many, many programs, and as you know, the site is located in a U.S.-designated zone, so there is access to the programs that support first-time homebuyers, down payment, accessibility, all, those things are real, and that falls within the location of the GOV Elementary, of the GOV Estates project that we will develop. Underwriting 101, that's, of course, essential of what we're going to do. Then, we also have, in a planned basis, one-on-one sessions, where we can do document checklist, pre-approval, coaching, these are all very important, and the challenge is that everybody, everybody is not at the same place when they're going to buy a home. Some are more ready than others, some, they could be a little bit hesitant or nervous, that will be part of our goal. And again, that comes back to the team, same we talk, how can we make this different? And make it also a fun experience, somebody's going to get a set of keys, Juan Carlos is an expert in doing these, right? He always tells me, the moment he changes the keys in the lock, and it goes from master key to the real key, and you give it to the homeowner, I mean, they shake, right, because from now on, it's me. And he's done that over and over again, and we want to do it 60-plus more times, right here in Belglade. So, finally, here, resources, yes, we'll have step-by-step buyer guides, underwriting infographic, things that people can read, they could be available over the web, but it could also be physically available. And of course, if the city reaches out, and you have a big employer in town, and we want to go do a presentation during a lunch or learn or something, we'll be available to do that. So, I'm Caribbean in nature, so I speak very fast, and if you let me lose some Spanish, I'll do it twice as fast. So, I'm trying to control the excitement, but at the very time, share with you of why, even though we reformulated our team very quickly, very quickly, we were super excited about the team that we have put together, because they have done it before, this team has done it before, and we know we will do it again with the same success that already Hillsboro Estates accomplished. So, before we end, we do have a plan for Mace Park. Remember, I mentioned at the beginning, we did that flyby on the right side. Mace is an amazingly large park, right? Right now, not a lot of excitement going on there. So, we have already gone, Juan Carlos has put together a very, very aggressive plan to make sure that it is appealing, that it is engaging, and we will give access, of course, to the park from the community. There's already a bridge there that needs to be revamped and fixed, we will, of course, revisit that with the city, so he's going to want to inspect. Right now, it's behind a bunch of bushes, and it's kind of tough to see, but we know it's there, so there will be access. Why? Because these are some of the ideas, and shade is very important. It's not just about the playpens for the children's or the adults, barbecuing, it's really important to have a little shade on it, so these are part of the concept that we have worked on. And the new Mace Park, as we like to call it, by the way, I did some research, very fun, I know it's named after Elsie Mays, which is the first color firefighter of Belglade, if I'm not mistaken, that is the origin of Mace Park. So, richly landscape, of course, welcoming to all ages, could be the kids, but the parents want to sit somewhere, and then the friends are going to come over. No-toll climbers, you know, if we're going to have a shoot, it's going to be very small, we don't want anybody falling from anywhere, very important. Built to withstand, of course, just like the homes, we mentioned category 5, 160 miles an hour, part of Juan Carlos' design. Make sure that they all sustain the winds when they do come, which will hopefully be, you know, many, many years from now. There'll be picnic, there'll be barbecue areas as part of this, and of course, safety, safety is always first. In fact, in our document, I share with you some of the risk considerations that the city, I'm sure, is going to have to take into consideration, because, you know, someone, maybe someday, maybe somebody may fall a little bit, and those are already there. So, the objective, not only to give you what potential risks are, but also to show you how this team thinks. So, we're thinking about what happened, we want to replicate what worked, and we want to be ready for when other circumstances show up. So, with that, I close the formal part. Now, without before saying, right, that just like Belglade came back from the 1928 hurricane that pretty much cleared everything up. I like history, and that's terrifying history, right, way back. I know that the only way to get into Belglade, which was called Hillsboro many years ago, was through canals, right? And then, the train came, and then it started building. And now, just like the city came back, that's what we intend to do here. This is a team with all the skills necessary to complete the project. Why? Not because they have it professionally, we haven't, because we've done it before. So, the second point there is proven, right? If you looked around, Hillsboro Estate, successful, homeowners like it. And third, this team is complete, and we know that, and that's important, because like we said, it's not one of those where somebody does a land, and then they walk away, and somebody builds, and then they walk away, no. It's all one piece, why? Because the project for workforce housing requires that integration. So, we feel strongly, we put together the dream team for this particular scenario. We look forward to engaging the city and become the builder here, the developer, everything that we know we can bring to the table, and that is my last slide. So, I leave you with FHm Future Homes and Management Ventures LLC. I appreciate your time here today, I appreciate you receiving the updated document, and of course, love to entertain any questions, comments, and ideas. The team is ready, is ready to engage, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your presentation, you're your partners, you guys call yourself the dream team. We do have, I'm sure, my commissioners do have a couple of questions, you've got to indulge us for a few minutes, and I'll start with Commissioner Reese.
Okay, again, very, very impressive presentation, I, you really addressed a lot of the things I was concerned about in the beginning of this. You said that is, the average size of the home is 115?
1,500 square feet.
1,500 square, is that a living space, is that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, one-story.
Got to include a garage and all that area?
That's living space.
Living space, okay. How large are the lots?
I'm sorry?
How large are the lots?
50 feet by 100, 5,000 square feet.
50 feet?
By 100, that's a 5,000 square feet lot.
Okay. And I guess when you started talking, first thing that came to my mind, timeframe.
Yes.
What is, what are the timeframe that you're setting for each of those phases?
You have, in the documents that we have shared, a timeframe, an estimated which today, today is real. Now, there is a level of aggressiveness on that timeframe, page seven, perhaps, it's a colored chart that tells you, it starts from later this year, and then, it moves on.
Page three.
Page three?
Page three, it's on this chart, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there it is.
Each phase is well defined there.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Each phase is well defined there.
All right. That's it for me.
Okay, I thank you, move on, Commissioner Collins, you may recognize the comments or questions. Okay, I thank you, move on, Commissioner Collins, you may recognize the comments or questions.
Again, I want to say thank you for coming into our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wanting to build, to enhance the beauty of beautiful Belgrade.
Yes, indeed.
I noticed here in the development and community integration piece, you have rental use will be prohibited at the time of sale. So these houses will be available for rentals as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay, could you explain that a little bit?
They will exclusively be for the homeowner that buys to live in. And then that is a commitment that we need to have in writing because of the regulations of the workforce housing.
Correct, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we clarify on that.
We're very clear on that.
Yeah, okay, great. Also, I see you said that each each one of the parking spaces outside of the house, I think it was like thirty inches wide. How much parking space will they have that would be adjacent to the home itself?
Well, it depends on the location of the lot. Some lots will have a bigger driveway than others, but typically it's going to be for a four car spacing. Outside of the garage itself.
That was my next question.
Yes, ma'am.
Two car garage, so it would be enough space for four cars.
Outside.
Outside.
Correct.
Okay, got you.
And we remember, we we are very, we're emphasizing on the thirty feet wide streets. Reason, because been there and done that, if you, if they're not thirty feet wide and you have a vehicle on one side, another one on the other side, it creates.
Congestion.
Very much so.
And that?
Yep, yep, yep. I don't know why they, you know, in in these seventies and nineties, always it used to be thirty feet roads, not anymore. And it it changes the whole atmosphere of the community.
Correct, and that's why I wanted to emphasize on these specific things. Because, yeah, it could be very congested and be hard for residents to get in and out.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I noticed that you said that you would try to hold workshops once a month.
Yes, ma'am.
How would you get that information out to the community?
Well, we'll be engaging with the community on a daily basis throughout through our sales team. And by the way, they're already starting to create enthusiasm. And what what we really want to do is, the issue here, it's not selling the house, but approving the homeowner. And that's where a lot of them need a lot of help. On basics, basic things, but normal individuals that have not bought a house don't understand that. And that's where the workshop helps them, we need to grab them by the hand and step by step, make sure that they qualify for their dream home.
Correct, and educating them, I think that.
Basically, that's the word, yes.
Very important.
Yes, ma'am.
So that one don't get into something that, you know, later on down the line, they find themselves into something that they should not have been. But thank you so much for all of that. And by the way, the landscaping and the visual that you presented is very beautiful.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
That's our intention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice Mayor, you've been recognized.
Yes, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple of questions. Windows and the doors, would there be shutters on them or hurricane impact?
Impact windows. Yes, the whole house is it's going to be designed and built for cat five, up to a hundred and sixty mile an hour wind.
Okay, on the common areas, is the intention is to have an HOA?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and it's in the in in what we gave you, yes.
One more question, would you have like a couple of lenders or financial institutions there to to try to help qualify the people?
Our plan is to have one main financial institution at the job site. We will create an office space for them to be there all the time, once we start the selling.
That's all my questions, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Captain.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Seth Perrin, I'm the Lieutenant for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, I serve as the Executive Officer in the Belgrade region. I have a few questions regarding safety and public security. Are there going to be street lighting in this neighborhood?
Yes, sir, there will.
Okay, is it going to be a standard package from FPL or is that going to be what FPL installs and then you are going to do in addition to?
We are in preliminary de- design now, I'm suggesting that we will bring in the lighting.
Okay, as far as you said it was going to be a gated community, is there one point of ingress egress with your your layout that you that you put up?
No, I I did not say it was going to be a gated community.
I could have sworn I heard you say that.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. HOA, yes, but not gated.
Okay, so no gate at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
At least as of now, it's not in plan.
Okay, the drawing that you guys put up on the the TV, there was one point of ingress egress off of G.
Correct.
But it looks like there is a lane or roadway that that runs around the perimeter. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So is there one point of ingress egress and then there's a perimeter roadway that runs around the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, how wide is that roadway, is that thirty feet as well?
Thirty feet, yes, sir.
So if one were to pull in off of G and come into the neighborhood, they could make a right and go around the perimeter of the neighborhood?
Not on the right, on the right, it's going to be a dead end. They can go, yes, I'm sorry, a right, yes, a right, they can go around, they cannot make a, if they make a left, they're going to hit a dead end.
Okay, so we have one point of ingress egress for the main part of the neighborhood and then one point they could come around the backside of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have any plans to install any kind of closed circuit camera system to monitor?
We don't, but if necessary, we'll be more than glad to work with that, especially with your department.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you, so thank you again, I have a couple.
Thank you, sir.
Your total on the roof is fifteen hundred square feet, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you're anticipating to get sixty plus?
Yes, and let me, yeah, and and let me say why we say sixty plus, when you see the site plan, you see sixty four lots. But we realize that to give the the access through the existing brick bridge, we might lose a house there. So because we want to have a nice access that people can walk by, bench it out, so they can sit down before they walk out and they walk in. So we're in the final sta- sta- stages and of actually knowing exactly how many over the sixty that we can fit there.
And and if given this project, if it's approved, is there any room where you guys could take another look at your your format of your layout? Will you guys be willing to do that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir, we'll be willing to work with any necessity that you have.
The lighting was addressed by the Lieutenant, thank you. Do you guys have a projected cost on the bill out in this entirety? Because I noticed in your financial, you indicated that.
We do.
It's based on the city, but do you have a projected cost?
We do, we want to start in the low three hundreds and we don't want to go over the mid three hundreds.
Well, I'm talking about the bill out the project itself.
Oh, yeah.
Divolution, all that.
Yes.
Do you have idea what that cost might be?
Yes, sure, the horizontal being the development side, it's roughly forty thousand per lot, which is basically two point six and change. Our, we're giving Mace a preliminary budget of ten grand per lot, bringing it to roughly six hundred thousand dollars for Mace. And we're looking at roughly a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty five dollar per square feet construction. That's around one eighty.
And and your total for everything you're saying is roughly?
Four fourteen. If you had around fourteen million. Yes, sir.
And there's possibility, if approved, that if there's a desire by the city would gated, you guys would be willing to do that as well?
Yes, we would, yes, we would.
Okay, go back to that community of that, now, those, is that the ideal of sixty plus, the way that's? Because I can't really see it, is that the ideal?
Well, as I said, well, we might, well, this is as the ideal number of houses that we can fit there. We want to fit as many as we're able. Now, why we say this is preliminary, because example, the retention lake might be moved to the center or to another side. We we we're still playing with that idea. We just want to have more homes access to the lake, so more homes can enjoy a lake view.
Okay.
Okay, at the same time, we have it on this side because we want it far from the school. Of course, we're planning to have the the lake fenced out. Since we have an elementary school next to our community, we don't want any accidents there. Yeah, and a lot of signage.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Commissioner Reese.
So again, I I know you said it's not going to be gated, but are there going to be barriers set around the development?
It's it's the barriers that we have as of right now, it's basically a lot of landscape.
Landscape.
Yes, sir. If the city has a requirement of fencing, we'll be more than glad to accommodate it.
Again, I I'm just, I'm just trying to picture it, you know, because you're going to have those kids coming from elementary school.
Running around and yes, I agree with you, been there and done that, we were all elementary students, yes.
That's that's what I'm looking at.
Yes, yes, we could, we could include cyclone fence, eight foot, eight feet high, disguised in the center of the land's caping. So it wouldn't seem like it's fenced, but it actually is fenced, so we could entertain that, okay? Yeah, that's the school one and another one on the on the left and another one on the rear, so it's basically on the front.
May I get a copy of that, because I'm I'm trying to see everything.
It's 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 in there.
It is?
Yes, sir.
No, no, I don't think that one made it there.
No?
No, well, yes, we will provide it to you.
Can can you allow us two days to give you the?
We we're going to talk about it.
All right.
We do have a question from the audience, guys, you you have the mic for the gentleman, somebody back.
Please.
Come up to the mic, you guys got questions? Do you don't mind, guys?
No, please, it's, it'll be a pleasure.
Yes.
I've been sitting here listening, I haven't heard anything, you know, your building. Are you all going to use any of the community for the work?
We always do, we always do, we did Hillsboro Estates and basically half of our vendor employees came from Belgrade.
Yes, well, I'm wondering if you're going to bring them out of the state and bring them here?
No, 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 we don't.
Because we got plenty trucks, we got plenty excavators, we got plenty people here in Belgrade can do mason work, beautiful mason work.
We'll be more than glad to work with you guys.
I mean, you have to use it, have a job fair where we can get them to.
Listen, as long as your work, it's 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 up to our standards, we'll be more than glad to give Belgadians the work.
Because I mean, we need, we need help too, you know?
Absolutely, I agree.
Because, you know, if the people want to pay for it, I think we should have something.
Totally agree.
Come back to the community for the people.
Yes, sir.
You know, like I say, a job fair, because I mean, there's plenty guys out here don't have license to do it. But job like me, I just move mud.
What's your name, sir?
Darrell Kelly.
Darrell.
I've been, I've been.
Jaycee, listen, I can agree with you more, as long as we'll give you first first choice. And if you guys work to our standards, more than glad to have you there, that's our, that's always been our intention.
I've been here for seventy one, yeah, seventy one years, two months ago, I was born and raised here. That's my main concern, we need to bring the jobs to Belgrade too, instead of the last people came up, I, it didn't pop into my mind until then, but I keep hearing it. But how wide is it going to be in between the houses?
Well, we have fifty feet.
Fifty feet, very much.
Finish, please, we have fifty feet lots by one hundred, okay? Our house, if I don't read call wrong, is thirty feet wide, so you're going to have twenty feet between the houses.
Then what type of shrubs you going to put in between the houses?
Sod and lansk, okay.
Okay, or we're going to have our own people from Belgrade to lay the sod too?
Well, that's how we, we've been using even a local sod.
You know, because I got trucks, I can haul fire.
He's campaigning.
Yeah, yeah.
Take it to that part, Mr. Kelly.
Listen, when we get there, again, I'll be more than glad to entertain all of that. We'll be there, so it'll be, it'll be a pleasure to have you in as long as we agree on all the terms.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, you got, Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Go to the mic first, sir.
Because you have to record it.
How you doing?
Good, how about you?
Jaycee. Stanley, a pleasure.
That pond, is that going to be, does that say retention pond?
Yes, sir.
And it's going to be by covered by fence?
Yes, sir.
All right, and the next question is, the reason why you don't want to sell houses for rent is so that people don't come in and buy them on bulk and rent them?
No, it's because the c- 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 covenants of the work housing regulations don't allow it.
No matter how long you've had the house, you can't rent the house.
I believe after eleven years. I'm happy to jump in.
Yes, thank you.
If you don't mind, under Palm Beach County's program, it requires owner occupancy for fifteen years. After the fifteen years, that's permitted. And if a buyer buys it, let's say in three years they want to sell it, that's acceptable as long as the person they're selling it to meets the same criteria that the original buyer had to meet. But then the fifteen year starts again.
And don't don't want to rent it?
They cannot rent it, partly because the there's both federal money and local money being contributed to build this type of housing. And there are a lot of restrictions and that's one of the primary ones because owner occupant communities create more neighborhood stabilization, more security, more investment. And a community, you know, generally more committed to keeping property values high.
Okay, last question, you said that it's a fifty by one hundred lot, that's about a quarter acre. So you're talking twenty feet, thirty feet between the houses?
Twenty feet in between wall to wall.
Thirty feet between the houses?
Thirty feet house, twenty feet between wall and wall of the houses.
Thirty foot?
Thirty feet wide house, the footprint of of the house, it's it's a thirty feet wide house. In between the houses, it's twenty feet.
So the lot line is twenty feet?
The lot line is twenty feet between both, yes, sir, Stanley.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I couldn't say in a better way.
Well, that's why she's attorney.
I needed that help.
All right, anybody else from the other, any commissioner, any fellow, we want to say thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
We will be discussing.
Appreciate your, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you so much. Let's take a five minute break, Commissioners. Uh, let's take a five minute break, Commissioners.
Uh, recess?
Oh. Te hace falta el USB? Si, tú encontraste el otro. Did you find the other? Cuz they need one.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Uh, if you guys don't mind, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, um, have an open discussion and at some point, we need to take a vote on what we wanna do, um, for open discussion. So, um, both presentations was, um, were defined and you guys did ask some really good relevant questions. Um, um, you did ask some and you was consistent with the question. That was important. Uh, seeing to have that same concern. I'm just really, um, proud of the way you guys conducted that, um, making sure that whatever we do, uh, we do it for the best interest of our community. So let's go with open comments and then, um, we'll, um, see if we can, uh, decide what we wanna do. We'll start with open comments. We'll start with you, Commissioner Reese.
Okay, well, again, as, as I mentioned, uh, my, my concern is of making sure that, uh, these are quality homes that are being built that's gonna add value to, uh, the surrounding communities. And, and that's attractive to, uh, our administrators and our teachers and our executives i- in our community. And, uh, I, I like the marketing strategy of the last group that was here because again, they're not just focusing here in our community, but in surrounding community to bring people in. Uh, and as I said before, uh, I, I do know there are a number of people that work here in the Glades and travel to Fort Lauderdale, to, to West Palm, to all these different areas of, of our community, of, of our, of our county as well as, uh, of Southeast Florida. And, uh, we definitely wanna have homes that are attracted to those individuals. And, uh, so I was very impressed with the last presentations.
Okay. Commissioner Collins?
Yes, I agree. Um, I was very impressed with the last presentation as well. Um, they brought a lot of information, um, great details. And, um, just overall, the way they presented, um, their presentation just gave us even clearer ideas of what things would look like or what we would be able to envision. Um, there were some, uh, different little characteristics and, um, ideas from the last pres- I meant from the first presentation, like, uh, there are solar lights and different things like that. But however, um, the last presentation, I do feel that, you know, they gave us a lot of information and gave us great insight on their plan and what they plan to do. Especially with, um, my concern in reference to that pond. But, um, with the retention pond, I feel that they should have some type of fencing being that it's, uh, adjacent to the elementary school, um, for safety, you know, because we've already had an incident like that on seven fifteen, um, in the park. A young man drowned. We don't want that if one of the kids, you know, are just wandering around the neighborhood as well. That's my take on it.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you may recognize.
I think both presentations were pretty good. Uh, each one has its a little bit more, you know, better points. Uh, I did like that, uh, the Halston is not, not set on a certain amount of housing, uh, specific number. They're more in the range of, you know, fifty to sixty, which I like cuz I don't like all that congestion and, and set numbers. But, uh, I mean, uh, both of them have history working in the community. So, you know, taking everything into account, I mean, uh, I, I think they're pretty much are kinda even. I'm not gonna say one's better than another one. Uh, I think the Halston maybe his houses are a little bit bigger. Uh, he maybe might have more options. I hate to have a whole neighborhood of each house looking the same. You know what I mean? And that's something I wish the second presenter presented would have had at least some, maybe two or three options, you know, of different floor plans, you know, just something different. Because i- i- it makes it a little bit more your home when you have different options. You know, like, they did build that Hillsborough Estates and they had four options out there. So if you drive through the community, you don't see every house that looks the same. Uh, you have the people there were able to choose from six or seven different paint colors, uh, the options. And that makes it unique to yourself. I, I don't wanna everybody, I like HOAs, but I don't want everybody to look the same as me. You know what I mean? A- and that's something I, that, uh, I think Mr. Halston gives us that, that different aesthetic maybe. I mean, cuz he didn't have all his stuff. So it's kind of right now, uh, I'm, you know, kinda hard to decide on which one was better. Uh, but in that sense, I think the Halstons would give more of a different option, more options for the home buyer.
Well, so let me give you my perspective and thank you, Commissioner, for being honest and candid. Um, I think when we started some years ago, we always talked about density and the size of these units. The good thing about both presenters said that they're willing to go back at the table. That's why I asked that question and they both agreed to do that, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Collins, Vice Mayor. Fifteen hundred square feet as opposed to eighteen hundreds, it's a big difference. And we always said no to the other cuz we didn't want nobody to be boxed in. And then the presenter on the second part was saying, well, we can get maybe sixty plus. You know, we had these conversations with the prior presenters and there was no way you can get that many in there. But the flip side on it, they were clear about it. Hey, listen, if we got a downside, we willing to do that. And that's why I asked those questions. Um, um, it, it's to me, they're willing to do that. And Halston willing to do that. Uh, so I could see we're kinda like, either way, um, what I would like to propose, maybe, um, um, we just, uh, give us some days and you asked for some information from one of the presenter, you want more schematics. Um, I think, uh, there was a question on this side. Give both presenters the opportunity to provide additional information, um, and sit down with our administrative staff and give us some days to, uh, think over this. And then our next commission meeting is gonna be, um, when we get back from, uh, Orlando. So then we could put that on the agenda to go ahead and make a decision what we wanna do. It'll give you opportunity. You guys wanna individually talk with the developers as well as, uh, get the additional information which, uh, some record that we want and see if they provide it. Um, if you have some ideas, how you like to see that, um, the, the, the layout, um, provide that to the city manager as well. So I think that, that can be a leverage where we all can probably agree on, give you a couple more days and, and, you know, but that's my thought. I mean, you know, but if you guys really wanna put it to the vote tonight, hey, I, I live and live with this. So give me y'all thoughts on, on that opinion and then we'll move on. Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I have no problem, uh, with that. Again, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I would really love to see, uh, other, other floor plans.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, in, in this and a- and again, uh, i- in both cases, I, I think if, if that's, as I said earlier with the, with the first presenter, you know, I, I, I like to see a floor plan. I, I like to see, like to see the layout of, of the development and of course, and again, that's, that's the reason why I, I saw a floor plan, but again, there could be others as, as you indicated cuz I know, uh, we don't want cookie cutter.
That, I, absolutely. That's what we told the last.
Yeah, we, we don't want cookie cutters. But at the same time, we, we wanna give people an option and, and I think, you know, uh, if we put those requirements to, to both presenters and, and see what they come up with, then, uh, that'd be fine. Uh, but, but again, I, I think we would have to have, uh, uh, another workshop to.
Yes, sir.
To talk about it before we make a decision.
So it'll be a phase two workshop.
Phase two workshop.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you. We are, we are under a cone of silence for this procurement, so you, you can't contact them directly.
Okay.
Um, we can have another workshop where you ask them questions.
Okay.
We also aren't convened tonight. If they're still here, we could ask them to come back in one at a time and we could say, please, do better. This is what we'd like you to do. You know, you have until next Monday and you can come back and present then if you want. I just wanna, if they're still here, I think it might behoove them to hear what you'd want.
We can see if they out there. If only one out there, then it wouldn't be fit for the others. So if they both out there, that'd be good news. Yeah, so good point, uh, Counselor.
I appreciate they both gone.
They've gone, okay. Um, so, um, what we're doing then, uh, just gonna, um, reconvene and have, we can have another workshop though, right, Counselor?
We can. We'll notice it. I, I think that we can work with staff to send them both the same message, which is.
Right.
You know, this is the direction we would like to see, sort of almost like a best and final. So like, come back with additional floor plans. Come back if you can increase your square footage. And we can give them some clear recommendations and, and rec- advise that they can come back on the eighteen.
You work with, um, staff and manager on that?
Yes.
That way, so you're here with staff, uh, Deputy Manager, will you be okay with that?
Sir.
And then you guys, and then I assume, Commissioner, we're talking about that Monday, uh, it'll have to be early during the day, right? Cuz our regular meeting is at night. Uh, I don't know what y'all schedule, but, uh, y'all tell me, uh, do y'all wanna do it a different day? Look like, uh, since it's the regular meeting, we, uh, probably wanna, I, I mean, y'all tell me, it's gotta be a workshop first, so.
I, I, you know, I have no problem for us doing it earlier so we can try to make a decision because I, I think we, we own a timeline as well.
Absolutely.
And, and, uh, again, we wanna give her, each of them an equal opportunity to, to make a good presentation. One where we can make a decision and with the understanding that whatever they come with us, to us with at the next meeting, uh, it's gonna be out of the ballpark or you might be out of the ballpark.
I agree. So that workshop will be. So what day is the commission meeting?
It's on the eighteen, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong. Eighteenth, August eighteenth. So that's next Monday. Now, what we can do is we can go back, Gemma and I, we can get together, go back, meet with the developers, let them know everything that you guys discussed.
Uh huh.
And through us, we can pass on the message that you guys want. You know, what else can you offer? Can you change some things around? And then can you meet us here probably Monday morning? You wanna do something nine AM? So we have time. You guys can discuss. And then Monday night.
Okay, uh, Monday morning, what your schedule look like?
Gemma, is that something that we could do?
Trying to see what.
What's the best time for her?
What's the best time for you, Commissioner?
You take a lunch?
Eleven? Ten, nine?
Eleven is your sole could possibly work because, um, I just have to prepare for.
Okay. You wanna say eleven thirty?
Yeah, eleven thirty.
Was that what we?
Eleven thirty, how long would the workshops be?
Well, it shouldn't be long. We got the gist of everything. There was some additional thing that we kinda like, had some concerns. And you guys will have that and we'll go through it. Get them, we'll get each presenter probably a good five to ten minutes.
Well, I, I think it probably be long, more than, we're gonna give them more time than that.
We can do eleven thirty, give everybody half an hour, really half an hour. That should be plenty of time. Eleven thirty, so you have one at eleven thirty, they'll go to twelve. The one at twelve will go to twelve thirty. And then you guys have thirty minute to decide. You guys will have a clear mind. At one o'clock, we should be done.
Okay.
From eleven thirty to one, you guys by then should have decided. Um, and then six thirty whenever, well, we'll have, what, four o'clock that day? We have CRAs. Two o'clock, it's not the commission. It's, it's just staff. Monday night at the commission meeting, you guys will then decide.
Eleven thirty, thirty minutes each, okay? We all agree with that?
Mm-hmm. Gemma, Gemma, yes, sir.
You don't need the most consensus, right?
No, consensus is fine, but I will say this. So in the, in the document that we put out, we put that the commission may request additional information from one or more developers. So that's what we're doing. We are requesting additional information as, as provided by this procurement. We will go back and watch the tape and make sure that we give them the same additional information. And if you want, we could send it to you all before we send it to them.
We want it before then, yeah.
No, no, I meant with what we're gonna send to them. So like, we'll type it up and say the, we would like this additional information, this list of eight things. We can send it to y'all so you can look at it and make sure that there's nothing else that you want.
My only outline what our concerns are.
Okay.
That's what she's saying, yeah.
Uh, we, we wanna see multiple plans.
Multiple floor plans?
Floor plans. Floor plans.
Okay, number one, multiple floor plans.
Okay.
Is that, that's basically what you're--
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what you're saying.
Floor plans, and then on here, I had increase in square footage, right? Possibility of increase.
That's a concern.
That's where the multiple floor plans comes in.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
The front of each building, so it's not a cookie cutter.
Facade.
Get on the mic, Neil. Neil, the mic.
The sense I was getting was that the design seemed to be cookie cutter, and everyone noticed that, first the layout of the whole floor plan of the whole complex, and that we want to see different facades, two or three different types of facades, frontages for the homes, and we should actually let them know that. Right, yeah, okay.
And then again, we know that one designer is giving us 30 feet road space, is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if the other one is gonna fall similar to--
What's that?
If the other developer's gonna fall, do the same road design. Hopefully, he can give us a, like, a design, not only of the house, but also a preliminary design of--
Of the development itself.
Of the development.
Provide width of road.
And lack of--
And preliminary site plan.
Yeah.
And we could just say, does not have to be to scale, we only have a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So increase, so multiple floor plan, increase in square footage, multiple facades or frontages of each home. Provide width of road, preliminary site plan, if not already provided.
Yeah.
Because I think we got one.
Yeah, correct.
And again, layout of the whole development, it's not a cookie cutter, or barracks, I would mention.
Okay.
I would, Mr. Curry, I would ask you, what's the right way to say better flow, what's the planning for an active, you should put in--
Traffic circulation?
Improve traffic circulation? Do you want me to put fencing around water?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Retention?
Better security of--
Yes.
Is that a choice?
Yes.
Better security of retention fund.
Yes.
I think that's a requirement.
Yeah.
But did we--
The school--
But I don't recall saying a retention fund in the first one.
It wasn't.
No, it didn't have one.
Didn't have one.
I think there was a little tiny one on the, it was tiny on the--
Yeah.
I think it was real small in the bottom corner or the top corner. We have a, you know, it's very little.
Yeah, that's what made me ask about it, because that little bridge goes from the school.
Well, again, it's just a better layout of the development itself, including the security of the retention fund.
Yes.
Do you want to ask them if they can do less homes? Or no? Like, what's the minimum amount of homes you must build?
That could be on the table, because we asked already, are you guys willing to, you know, downsize your project, so it won't hurt?
So we should say--
For both, yeah.
Okay, are you open to--
Because the first presenter said they'd go from 60 to 50, and the second said they'd go 60-plus. Then we asked both, are you willing to negotiate that if it's not me? My concern is to project the cost, because whatever the projected cost on either end of the, it's gonna determine, you know, whether this project is gonna work. And I like that question to be on the table, what is the projected cost on the build-out? Because you gotta have those financials, you gotta have the capital ready to go. You cannot be going and say, okay, we're seeking the financials, and that's where I'm a little, I'm a little concerned. But if that's all clear, I'm good with it. I just--
Again, that's the reason why I asked for the timeframe.
Yeah, you did ask, and then--
That's why I asked for the timeframe.
I think they both had the same timeframe, two years, and--
So, yeah, so that means that if you're gonna deal with in that timeframe, you better have the funds already in place.
Well, again--
Yeah.
That they had, they already got the approval. But the second, then I indicate that, not saying they don't, I just think we need to be, before we lease, we need to not be out there, because right now, I understand, oh, go ahead, Neil.
Another way of asking about the amount of homes, maybe it's proper for us to ask them, what's their break-even point? What do they have to have there?
Yeah, I wrote, what's the minimum number of homes you must build to meet your pro forma? But we could put slash, what is your break-even point? And then what is the projected cost of the build-out? So two separate--
Okay.
Sort of ways of asking, but I think it's reasonable, you know, what must you do to make this work financially?
And Neil, from your experience in terms of the capital for the years involved, typically the developers, do they make that disclosure upfront, or do they--
They have, yeah. Yeah, they would, because I've done this before. Remember, they're asking us to trust them with the future.
And I haven't seen that in the second presentation.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying to this commission. All I'm saying to you guys, let's make sure that in this process, second phase, that, hey, have you secured your financial on the build-out costs. We don't need people getting it and then saying they gotta go find it. Then we're looking at, okay, we can't build a project. I'm not saying that's what it is, but as commissioners, we gotta put that on the table.
In the RFP, we ask questions like that.
Because that's why you had the bond there.
Yeah, the bond is in case they start and they walk away. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask who their financial people are, who their lenders are.
Again, I didn't see it, so I'm saying to you guys, read it closely. It didn't, all it says is that upon the city approval, we will seek private and financial resources. That's all it says.
I agree with the mayor. I think we need to know beforehand if they have the financial security. I don't want to give a proof of a builder, and he's still gotta go requesting something. I'd rather have somebody that I know, that he's got the financial commitment to move forward and build these houses, even if, you know, I understand the two-year trajectory that he wants to build it, but I agree with the mayor there, that they need to have, we need to know beforehand. I have it, or I don't have it. It's just plain and simple. The other thing that goes back way back when, when I involved this in the beginning years ago, was many times developer would actually segment his development. He'd build a certain amount of homes, then get more financing based upon what he's building sold, to go to the next segment of it.
That's what they put in there, right.
Yeah, so that's what we got to, you gotta know upfront what's going on, we want to do this.
So do you have a plan for phasing? That's what you're saying? Do you have a plan for phasing? Or will this be one phase? And then the second one is, do you have the financial, or like, do you have a letter of commitment to the bank? And if so, what's the number of homes it's tied to?
That's what, I'm good either way. I mean, that's, to me, important.
And you want them to identify different--
Yeah.
We can say, please provide it.
Yeah, okay.
You want our land.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, commissioners, I tell you, you guys are awesome. I really, and Lieutenant, thank you for the questions on that, into the audience. Mr. Kelly?
On that pond, they talk about building. It's my personal, I think that's the wrong thing to do, because you know our kids, they love to climb. I don't think there's gonna be a fence high enough for them young kids not to climb coming from that school, if somebody, if they're out there playing or running. Now, I noticed on most of our businesses, for the water runoff, they got a little, it looks like a pond, but it don't hold water. They can go in and mow it. Once you can put a fence just in case, it's gonna drain right away, because I don't think we're gonna get that much of a fluid unless the dike breaks. But the, our kids, I mean, my grandkids, they love to climb. And I got one on 7/15, there were fences there too. But we got, look at this here, more or less to safety for these kids at that school. And the first gentleman come in, I kind of like his ideas, because he's upfront. But that pond is worse than anything in this world. I think it just needs to be a, like, case in, we did get a lot of water there, we have a runoff. Then plus, it can keep it mowed, like behind Walgreens, they got water, they keep it mowed. I think that would look better than a lake, then who's gonna mow next to that lake when you start getting grass up high, and you got no way to get in there? That's gonna be an obstacle. I think the pond needs to be, it's out of here. Because definitely, they're gonna have to have a wastewater pit there, garden. If you use that, it can, well, we're gonna allow it, with access with a gate, so they can do in five more.
Well, we'll make the notation for that to the development, see what they tell us.
Yeah, because I mean, what, you know, kids love water.
Yep. Adults too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But we'll make notation on that, Ms. Kelly.
Yeah, but I mean, that, now you're worried about them kids there at that school.
Okay. Point we're taking. Again, Deputy Manager, anything for the good order? Commissioner, any final comments? Okay, we got a good plan. Commissioner Collins, Vice Mayor, and Counsel? Okay, anything?
No, very good. I'll work with staff, and we'll get this to you all for your review, to make sure it has everything you want, and then we'll get it to them. I have this ready, so I can send it to you, you can clean it up and get it to them hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, Lieutenant?
All right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we're all set, 11:30 Monday.
11:30 Monday. This meeting is adjourned.